I'd like to call to order the March 4th, 2024 meeting of the West Bridgewater School Committee and the fiscal year 25 budget hearing. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence? Thank you. The listing of matters on tonight's agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at this meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being shown live on cable and is being livestreamed on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. A recording of this meeting will also be made available on the wb-cam.org website. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38N, I'd like to officially open the public hearing on the proposed 2025 fiscal year school department budget. Tonight, we're going to review the proposed FY25 budget in its entirety with Mr. Bodwell and Mrs. Grant and have the opportunity to ask questions. As a reminder, we're not voting on this budget tonight. We're scheduled to meet again in a week from today, on Monday, March 11th, for the vote. And I know we're going to get into the further dates later on, but we're scheduled to present our approved budget to the selectmen on March 20th and the FinCom on March 21st. So turn it over to you.
All right. There we go. I have a number of slides, but if you have questions as we go through, please stop me and we can certainly go back and we can answer any other questions at the end. So as Mrs. Hume said, these are the upcoming dates for the budget. We'll hopefully approve it next week and then we move forward the process with finally at the town meeting on May 6th. So we always start, we're a mission-driven district, so we always want to abide by our mission when we're building our budget. It's very important to us that we stay true to our core of West Bridgewater. As we build the budget, it is a cyclical process. We're building the budget with these things in mind, such as our district and school priorities, our school, my goals, the school goals, the administrator goals, the teacher goals. We're always looking at the social, emotional well-being of our students and staff, and of course, we're looking at achievement, making sure we're strengthening the skills of all of our students to make sure they excel to the best degree possible. Over the years, I think we've worked from a reactive or an essential budget, taking areas and trying to move forward, and we're now moving into, and I think we have been over the last year or so, more strategic and proactive, trying to address areas of need within our budget. I thank the school committee for their support in supporting a fully funded budget over the years, being able to add positions, and we'll talk a little bit about those as we go through the presentation. Just want to share some data. We have had, over the past five years, a pretty significant rise in our high-need population. High needs as defined by the state are students in special education, our English language learners, and our low-income students. You'll see that we've gone from the mid-20s to the mid to high-30s over the past five years, when we were pretty much in the, around 25%. Now, we're up in the high-30s.
And so that change isn't primarily because of a change in definition of how they're defining high-need students, but it's a real change?
A real change. Yeah, real numbers, real change. Correct. We have also seen our enrollment go up. This year, it stayed pretty consistent, but I think of the housing boom or the building boom, I don't think really has taken effect yet in town. We still have a number of houses that are not completed. We have an apartment complex right near 24 that hasn't been completed. We have seen an increase in our organic West Bridgewater population. That actually helped us out with our Chapter 70 funding, so we're up there, and we're down some choice students. But we predict to continue to grow, and so does the MSBA when they're looking at our future building project. Every year, we talk about special education, our most needy students, students who are placed out of district, that is what's best for them. We go through a process when we do that, but about 1% of our population is placed out of district, which accounts for about $2.8 million, which is about 14% of our overall budget. Again, placements that are appropriate for the students and families. Transportation is always a concern due to the high numbers. If we're fortunate, we may get transportation for a student at 35,000, but they could be up as high as 95,000. And again, that's through a lot of hard work, looking at different companies, trying to find which is the best route, if we can combine routes, that's certainly very helpful. And when I updated this slide this year, the numbers have also increased. So we have students that are in public school programs, such as in East Bridgewater and Bridgewater-Ranham, ranging 45,000 to 55,000. And again, with these programs, then you also do need to then add in the transportation for the total cost. We have collaborative programs, 76,000 to 100,000, and then we have some non-public private schools. So those are, could be a lot more, up into the hundreds of thousands. This year, fortunately, we didn't see the high increase of 14% last year for the OSD, for the special education increase. It was a more reasonable amount, about 5%, I think. So that wasn't the main hit we took last year. School choice, we are open for school choice. We had a record number of applicants this year. As of today, we had 222 applicants. We averaged around 150 the past few years. It's great that people want to come to West Bridgewater. We should take a lot of pride in that as a community, as a school system, that people want to be educated here. You'll look at some numbers. We budgeted 260 last year. Tonight, you'll hear in our budget, we have 250 students budgeted. We're concerned, though, with that number, because we do not want to overcrowd our classrooms.
So last year, we budgeted 260, but we took 240?
We have 247 in right now.
247, okay. So we're budgeting for 250 is pretty close to what we currently have.
It's pretty close. So we have a number, we have about 30, I think we have 33 students graduating, so we're creating a gap. I will tell you now, it will not be my intention to add into the elementary level. There have to be some real extenuating circumstances. Last year, we took in, I think it was all siblings, still a very small number in the elementary. We took some in kindergarten to help fill that position, but the other grades, it was less than 10 students, grades 1 to 6. I honestly don't think we have the room to do it. What I've said before is my concern isn't just next year, it's the year after, and the year after that, and the year after that. We're still years away from a building project, so I think it's not responsible to be taking in students, because we're going to get organic growth anyhow within the town. We can do five sections in each of the schools. We can't do six. We just physically don't have the classroom space for that.
So Mr. Bodwell, the 222, what percentage roughly was the elementary levels?
It was pretty split. We had a lot of 9th grade applicants, which is perfect, because we do lose students to the vocational, the agricultural schools, and a few to private schools. So 9th grade is where we'll see the bulk of our students coming in through school choice. We had a smaller-than-normal 9th grade last year. We didn't have as many come into West Bridgewater, so there's some room there in next year's 10th grade. Our 6th grade is, I think, at 98 or 99 right now, so we can go up a little, but the same concern I have, I don't want to add too many, because then we'll quickly be in the high-teens, low-20s, and then it becomes a problem. Right now, at the middle, senior, high school, I think as of last week, we had 620 students, so we're still in a good range, but the numbers are going to increase, so we have to be responsible.
So you cited some examples of 6th and then 9th and 10th grades. How about the 7th and 8th grades, they're also in this building?
They're right now, I think, 112 in 7th grade, 114 in grade 8. So those, 118 in grade 8, if we lose 20 to 25, we'll be able to replace those, but we may end up losing more to Southeastern. But right now, I think we have about 75 students at Southeastern, so about 20 students a year is the average. So I know school choice is a hot topic, because it's a big fund. We'll talk more about how it helps us funding. It's always been really positive until now we're having that space crunch. We were filling classrooms that needed students, and now we're getting to a point where we have our own students in there, so we don't want to overcrow. Someone had asked me recently, "Well, why do we open choice?" And I said, "We opened it because we have to open it for the district, and then we decide which grades are open." So that's why 9th through 12 is probably the prime grades that we'll look at. In future years, if we know we're not going to open it, then we'll make it more public, that the elementary is not going to open, but people could still apply. School contributions, a portion of our budget is funded through the school. School contributions, which make up school choice. Circuit breaker, which is money given back by the state for overages in special education funding. We have revolving accounts, like athletic revolving, evening school, and other accounts. The, I think there's a, what's another?
Surround.
Surround care, another big one. And we have some special education and some grants that are going to the school contributions. We try our best to make this as big a portion as possible, because that's less that the town has to pay in the overall budget. So you'll see what we're requesting, what our school contributions are, and then the overall budget number.
So in the special education and grants, is that the reimbursement for the state for the previous years, circuit breaker?
It's some grants, like the 240 grant.
The 240, yeah. Early child education grant.
So the reimbursement's more through the circuit breaker?
Yeah.
Okay. Chapter 70 funding. Chapter 70 is the main aid that school districts, but it goes to the town, gets for public education. Shows a 10-year trend of where the amount of money that we have received. The next slide will show you the actual increased amount. This year, we had an increase of over 400,000, down from last year, but you'll see that over $6.9 million that goes, comes to the town from Chapter 70. So we've seen a pretty steady increase over the past four years in our Chapter 70 funding.
Question about Chapter 70.
Yes.
So I know our aid has increased. Our foundation, I'm assuming, has increased as well. Do you know what our projected foundation budget for fiscal year 25 is?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can find it for next week.
Okay. I can look it up, too.
All right. Thank you. So this just shows the last four years of the increased amount in Chapter 70. You'll see in FY24, we had a very large increase of over 22%, where the state was up also. They were at 9.8%. This year, West Bridgewater received a 6.2% increase, and the state was at 4%. There is state minimum, $30 per student. We far exceed that amount, and there are a lot of districts that do receive the state minimum, which really wouldn't be a lot of money for us into that. We've always received over that. Our increase is due to a few factors. Number one, we have the growth in our West Bridgewater population, which has helped, and our high needs continue to go up, although not as great as it did the year before. This slide shows you some historical data on our school contributions. In yellow, you'll see the town, what they've contributed to our budget. In the blue, we have school contributions, that's what I talked about, about the 2.5 million, and in red is the Chapter 70 funding. So you'll see school contributions going down, mostly due to the fewer number of school choice students that we've had, and again, that may go down a little bit more if we decrease our predicted number. Chapter 70 funding has increased, as we just showed, and the town funding was down, but now it's a little bit more stable, but it had gone down. So with the increase in other avenues, especially Chapter 70, the town has had to contribute a little bit less. And again, the school contributions help out a lot to help decrease what the town has to put in. In every budget, in every school system, you have unexpected expenses. We have things that happen in schools that don't happen, frankly, in other departments in all communities. We have students who may move in or age in. Once they turn three years old, we become responsible, so a student could move in with high needs, that we do have to look at placement right away. And again, as we talked about before, placements can be very expensive, along with the transportation. School choice, the decreasing numbers in school choice over the next few years, if we're down about 40 students, that could be about $200,000. So we know that that number is going to keep going down, and that'll continue to create a bigger deficit. Our EL students who require services from the day they move in, they become, they are evaluated, and then we need to make sure they're getting the proper amount of minutes per day. That's not predictable in terms of those students who are coming in or families, and they could be at a number of different grade levels. And we have our aging elementary buildings, 60 years or so old, at 250,000 square feet. We have things that could go wrong, like in your home, unexpected expenses that we have to cover. Again, we have a building project on the way, but it's years from fruition. Just want to highlight some of the positions we've added or increased over the years. You can see them. I won't read them all to you, but you'll see that we've added additional classroom teachers to address class size, going from those sections of 4 to 5, special education, related services, mental health, all positions that have been needed either due to the needs in the district or the population changes over time. So again, that's what, thank the school committee for what we've done. We'll talk about what we're looking to add this year in our proposed budget. So just want to talk briefly about the positive effects of some of these added positions. For example, here at the middle, senior, high school, we had gone from one school psychologist for grades 7 to 12, servicing all kids, doing all testing, groups, and meeting with students as needed. We have added two school adjustment counselors and a .6 school psychologist that does testing. So we went from one person to 2.6, and it's working. We have, students are seen when they're needed. If one person's tied up, they can go see someone else. We've had fewer students with crisis calls, that we've had to call either mobile crisis or send people out sometimes with emergency services, and more available to meet with students and with groups within the middle, senior, high school. So that's a position that we said, "Oh, we need to add here." We don't need to add more right now. I think we're sufficiently staffed, but we're at a good spot, and we're seeing the benefits of that. Our ESL staff, so in the past four years, we went from 1.5 to 3.7 licensed staff members. We've seen a 32% increase in the number of students over those four years. We're pretty consistent where we were last year. We have minutes that are required by DESI, but again, we have staff that are available in all four buildings. We do have some concerns at kindergarten, but we have someone consulting and going down there. But again, adding staff where they were needed, and we're seeing good benefits from that.
When you say consulting, is that contracted, or is it somebody moving from another building in the district?
Someone in the district going down to meet with the staff and the students.
Okay.
Classroom teachers, you'll see in a minute, we're adding classroom teachers to go from four to five due to the needs. If we weren't adding these teachers, then we would have very high numbers in some of the classes. We've added sub-separate special education educators, and that's helping us. You'll see later that our collaborative placement, the number, the amount of money is down, and that's partly because we're able to keep kids in. We're not going to be able to keep all students in. Again, it depends on the needs of the students, so we're going to place them where they're most appropriately should be placed. But creating these programs, although it's an increase, hopefully we show a decrease down the road in our out-of-district placements. And related services, we've added to speech, we've added Coda positions, we're doing that again. But again, is it still something we need to add for the future? Absolutely. So we still have needs, but I think we've seen benefits from these added positions, real benefits to our kids and for our staff. So ESER. A few years ago, we've gone through ESER 1, 2, and 3. We got in the last, in ESER 3, I think we had over 500,000 that we used over a couple years. There is no more federal funding through ESER. And I remember being asked a question, "What happens when the ESER money runs out?" And I said, "These are positions we're going to need to add to our budget. They're not extra positions, they're not fluff." Unfortunately, we've never had fluff positions that we could add. So we've had, these are positions that are in our budget tonight that were previously paid by ESER. So .5, we actually had a .5 person paid in our budget. It was an additional .5, so it's a 1.0 position, but there was an additional .5. Same thing at the Howard School, the person was hired at .5. We made them full-time through ESER for a 1.0 ESL teacher, and we added a .5 speech and language teacher. So those four positions, or 2.5 FTEs, are 184,000. Those are real numbers, real dollars.
Is that the last of, the last we'll hear of ESER?
Yes, no more ESER.
Aside from maybe a couple of meetings in a few weeks?
These are some positions we're looking to add into the budget. Again, these are needed positions. We'll talk a minute about what else we need, but for the Howard School, we'll have 14 teachers in the classrooms this year, so our 4th grade and our 6th grade will have five sections. Our 5th grade is still going to have four sections. It's at 98 or 99 right now. We've done that before with other classes of similar size. It's not ideal, but the plan is to make that a fifth section next year. We had the elementary school adjustment counselor, which was, we have this year through a behavioral health grant. That grant could be renewed. They do not know now. We've reached out to them, so we're still waiting to hear back, but we feel it's been very beneficial within our schools. It's a person who has gone to different schools within the elementary level. We're adding to our speech and language, the one we previously added through ESER, to go from a .5 to a .6, which goes from two and a half to three full days a week. .4 Coda Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant for two days a week. That helps the OT. It's, they can work with kids, they can't do testing, so there's limitations, but it does provide a higher level or more services to those students in need. And in the preschool program, we had two and a half preschool teachers. We're requesting to go up to three, because we're going to have one sub-separate program for preschool. It's going to be helpful for our students, and it's needed because it's, we're mandated to provide them the educational services. So those which come out to a 3.0 FTE equal 197,000 and change.
I'm sorry, is that grant, how much is that?
The grant was for 100,000. So for this year, what we did is we, because we got the grant pretty late, we actually hired two school adjustment counselors due to the timing of it. Now, when we get a federal grant, we also need to take out 9% of the grant for retirement, so it really was 91,000, but we were able to fit those two positions in. Next year, if it's for 100 again, it'll basically be the 91,000, so we'll see where else we can use that money.
So the 1.0 elementary school adjustment counselor is increased to two positions that already exist, to make them full-time from part-time, and the rest are new additions? Did I understand that correctly?
So we have two at the middle, senior, high school.
Yep.
And we have, this position is, we have two positions currently, but we're only budgeting one for next year.
Okay. So there would be a decrease in the number of people that we have in that position?
Correct, yes. I mean, we're, I think we're fortunate. The original intent of the grant was to have one school adjustment counselor and a part-time school psychologist, but the truth is, we could not find a school psychologist for that.
Okay.
So it is a reduction, but we think having that one person along with the other positions, we have two, we have one open school psychologist position at the Roselle and at Howard, so we'll basically have three staff, where we currently have two.
Okay. And the Coda, the sub-separate preschool teacher, those are new to us, right?
Correct.
Those are not positions that we currently have?
Correct.
Can I just clarify?
Sure.
So the school psychologists, that would be, for next year, the hope is to have, to maintain the three, or we're, because I know we had one that's vacated the position at Howard.
Correct.
And then we have Roselle, and then we have one here.
Correct.
So...
So what we're looking at, and I'm working with Mrs. Marble, is we're looking to hire one school psychologist for testing, a school adjustment counselor, and then this position here. So we have one school psychologist and two school adjustment counselors.
Okay. So how many in the district total for school psychologists? And is that enough to do testing? 2.6?
Right. Oh, unless you do it your way, okay.
I'm going to defer. I don't want to misspeak.
So we will have two open positions, which, due to retirements.
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
So we're looking to add more.
Okay.
So I have these three positions.
Yep.
Looking for one to be a school psych.
Okay.
Just testing only, and two school adjustment counselors.
Okay.
So we're looking to add one, the adjustment process, we have two digital.
Okay, okay.
Is that clarifying?
Yes. So, and is that enough? Because I'm always thinking about the testing, the special education testing. The school adjustment counselor is, you know, in the trenches and doing the daily services, but cannot do the testing. So I want to make sure that we're adequately staffed for that.
So we ran the numbers this year.
Yep.
Looking at the numbers this year and in the past, doing testing only, we should be fine.
Okay.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, we have other needs that we want to address for the future. We've done something similar over the past few years, and when I look back and I was redoing the presentation, I thought, "Oh, good, we did that. Good, we did that." But we want to look at special education coordinators at the elementary level and the secondary level. We know we'll need an additional or more classroom teachers to get us up to our fives, and incremental increases to our related services, potentially that .6 person for speech and language going to .8 or to 1.0. Looking at our OT numbers. Again, we'll continue to look at the data, look at the numbers, look at what's on the students' plans, and adjust accordingly. We feel what we have now, we are covering those, we just, but we know that the future is things we want to add.
I'm glad we're looking at those for the future. I'm concerned that we maybe are burning out some staff now with high level of students that staff need to address. Their workloads are pretty high in some cases. I'm glad that we're adding a Coda, but I wonder if it's enough. I'm worried about staff leaving the district mid-year, burning out and saying, "That's it, I've got to find some other way of handling this stress." We saw a few staff members leave this year that caused problems for my son, so he was without a teacher for a few weeks while we were trying to find a replacement. He's without a one-on-one right now, and I don't want to have that happen too often. You know, it's understandable that sometimes things change, and we need to try and correct the course in the middle of the year, but if we can avoid that situation, it would definitely be preferable.
And I think what we're going to do is we're going to look at the grids, and we'll see what needs to be a consult, what needs to be working with kids. So I think by doing that and making sure we're appropriately following all the plans, I think we'll reevaluate. I think we feel now it's good. Is it busy? Yeah. Do we think that the additional pieces will help? We do. And I know...
So do we know offhand that, you know, the number of hours of different services that we need from just adding up all of the IEPs that we have, does that make a workload that's manageable? Or are we going to have one person servicing 70 kids where they should be maybe handling a certain number less?
We feel confident, yes. I'll talk more with Kathy, but I do feel that we are appropriately staffed with the added positions. And I think, you know, we know that not only in West Bridgewater, but other districts, it is tough to find staff, especially for our one-to-ones and our instructional assistance, so we're, you know, we're aware of that, and it's something I hear in other districts. It only matters what happens here in West Bridgewater, but I think it is, it's pretty common, unfortunately. And I think we'll always continue to look at the data, we'll look at the numbers, and we'll make adjustments as necessary.
Yeah, I know it's been hard to find people to work in ABA in our home.
Yeah.
We just can't find people to fill the number of hours that we've been approved for, and I know the schools are dealing with the same thing.
I know.
Is it a lack of qualified resources?
Is it a lack of qualified resources? Is it a lack of what we're paying for compensation? Is it, what is the reasoning?
In my own experience, it's both. There aren't enough people who want to work for the pay that you get. You get a lot of people who are really dedicated to helping other people, and they're willing to do it, maybe the hours work for, you know, other jobs that they hold, but it is really hard to find people to work for that pay.
And we, and we've got great people, and it's, but it's hard. I mean, education is hard in general. It's a difficult job, and, but I think it's, we're trying to find ways to make sure they have enough training and support to be successful. I think, again, that's what our district is seeing, because when I go to collaborative meetings, I'm seeing what collaboratives can do for training and support for our instructional assistants as well.
So I echo Dave's concerns, and I very much understand, you know, I've peeked ahead and I see the percentages and know what we're looking at for an increase. And I appreciate that we're managing the ESER Cliff and we're being conservative. I just worry that, given that we have lost staff this year, given that we're fielding complaints from parents, I am concerned that we're going to lose good staff. And, and I know we need to be careful in, in growing the budget, but I'm afraid that if we are not appropriately staffing, we're going to lose good staff. And then that impacts our kids.
And I know we have lost staff. I don't, I don't think, I think for some, it may have been the position. Others were either promoted or received, you know, they were, they took a change, would benefited them, you know, financially. And again, for people who have concerns, we want to hear them. We want to, we want to know what the concerns are. I encourage any parent to reach out to, you know, the teacher, the principal, to Mrs. Marble, myself, because we want to know what the concerns are, so we can address them as efficiently as possible. That's our goal. Our goal is for every kid to have a great experience, every staff member to have a great experience. I think we're pretty open for meeting with people and talking about it. There's some things that we can absolutely change, there's some things that we can't change in the moment, but we want to address them as, as the issues come, and hopefully they don't build up over time, because I know that gets very frustrating for people. But, you know, we try to send out, we do surveys, special education, but we want to, we want to fix it. We're never going to close the door on anyone. We're always going to be there for them to listen.
So special education coordinator is something I've been advocating for as long as I've been here, and I'm glad to see it on the intent for future needs. But I think that may be a position that we could add for the next year's budget that might go a long way to relieving pressure on the people who are already feeling overburdened, and that maybe we can avoid losing somebody in the middle of the year next year, or even over the summer. You know, if they just move on at the end of a school year, it's a little less disruptive, but still disappointing when you feel like you've got somebody that's really great and you don't want to lose them.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's definitely something that we need to add for the future. I do it. And the hopeful part is, and again, you don't want to build your budget on hope by any means, but we did receive that grant this year that allowed us to have that. And then we turned around and said, we're not sure if the grant's there, but we know it needs to go into our budget. Hopefully, there'll be something else out there that we could add. Well, we get the grant, and then we make other decisions. We say, we have this money now, what can we look at? And I think we'll, as always prioritize how much we can add, because what I showed before for the ESER Cliff and the new staff was 5.5 FTEs of varying levels, but still, you know, adding a lot of staff. I think that's, I think it's good. We're moving, we've been moving, thanks to the support of the school committee and the town, we've moved forward with our budget. I think we're moving, continuing to do that, and we're not done yet, is kind of the message.
But what you're saying is, we're looking at it for fiscal year '26, you're saying, you'd like to see it for fiscal year '25?
Yes, I think it would be pretty high value. I was talking with somebody who's a former Methuen School Committee member earlier today. I just happened to work with them. And they mentioned that at times, they would budget a position for a salary of a dollar, so that it was on their books that they have the position, and then if they were able to find money to pay for them, for example, if we got a grant we don't know that we're going to get, they could then fully fund the salary for that position. Is that something we should be trying to do, or is that kind of a bookkeeping trick?
I mean, we're a bottom-line budget. So we can add a position if a grant comes through, then again, we're not going to turn any money away, and I think it would be beneficial.
Okay, so we wouldn't face a problem with adding a staff member or a position if the money became available later, after this whole budget process is completed?
So we did, you know, we added to the grant the other position for the school adjustment counselor. I just get concerned, and just being honest in my role as superintendent, of going too high in a budget increase. I, I think we've had the support of the town and the community, which is excellent. We're very thankful for that, but I want to keep, you know, on the trajectory of adding...
It's a balancing act. You don't want to do too much and ruin your goodwill, but...
Your points are very well taken.
There are people who have never supported the school budget and have always advocated against it, no matter what it is, even if it's $17,000 less than the previous year. And you'll never win those people over.
Right.
I agree, and that's why I think I want to look a little more in-depth at the foundation budget from Chapter 70, and, you know, what the target share is for our community. Because our funding has increased. I did just look up the foundation just for the last two years. In fiscal year '23, it was 13 and a half million. Fiscal year '24 is 15.25 million, and for next year, it's projected to be 15.9, so just under 16. So in, you know, three years, it's gone up 2 and 1/2 million. And that foundation budget is based on our students' needs. Again, I want to take some time to go down the rabbit hole and look at what the target share is, because historically, it's been about 60%. So if our aid is increasing and our town share is remaining the same, then our budget should be growing, rather than the aid increasing and the town share coming down. I know that we're looking at, again, looking ahead, we're looking at 7%, but that includes the Chapter 70. So is it a true 7% increase? Or I'm interested in wanting, knowing what the percent increase is on the town and on tax burden.
Okay.
So that's just, you know, information to have.
Yeah, absolutely. We good on this one? Okay. This just shows a summary of the increases. Hopefully, there is real numbers as we could get, divided up into four categories. Our additional staffing, those are our new hires for this year that we're looking at. You can see the dollar amount and the percentage amount. It's kind of hard to see if you're far away, but it's, you know, about 1.2%. Our teaching services, which are our teachers' contractual obligations, including their step and track raises, are about 2.7%. Our out-of-district placements, again, these are, these are always very tricky to know where we're at. It's, you try to budget as best you can, about 1.1%, which I think is still pretty reasonable compared to a lot of districts. And then our ESER and school choice money going down is about 1.3%. So you look at that, you add up those numbers, and then you look at the, there's a net increase of all other lines. Some of our school supplies, some of our curriculum supplies are equal up another 0.85%. So our overall, and there's another line we'll see, and we'll go through our budget lines, but the total increase that we're looking from last year, and that's a typo, sorry, I missed that, this should say FY '24. I know, we went through it four times, more than four, is 7.17%. So it is down from last year, 7.78%. We're still looking at some other numbers, too. I think, you know, budgeting, especially when you look at staffing and special education, is always very fluid. This is our first run-through with you, but that's where we're at right now with the 250 school choice.
So out-of-district placements, I can understand being difficult to predict, because you never know if a family will say, okay, the end of the school year has happened, I don't think this is really working for us, we need to find something, and over the summer, they might look for a new program. How do we try and predict what we're going to have for next year, other than going by what we already are paying for out-of-district placement this year? Do we make a best guess at who we think might look for an out-of-district placement? I mean, you can't really depend on the parents saying, that's it, I'm pulling my kid out in every instance, right?
Right, right. Good question. We go, you know, they, it's a process. We go through the process, we do the steps to the process, and then there's looking at programs and evaluating which programs are the best fit for the students. And, and we have to look and decide, all right, do we think this one is, you know, absolutely a student that's going to be going out? Are we 50/50 and just not sure if they want, you know, if we're going to work and stay within the district? Can we create programs within our district to service the students? Again, that may be an additional cost, but there's a benefit to keeping a child in here. I think if we can keep students in...
Yeah, they get to stay with their friends, and they get to stay near home.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's our goal, is to create the best learning environment for students in, in district. And if not, then we'll find the appropriate placement. So it's, again...
So do we try and estimate, you know, every year, we have about this expected cost, so we'll keep it close to that number?
Yes. And we look, and we look at all things from the tuition costs, the transportation costs, the ESY costs, and so forth. So they're all a little bit variable. Some are not very variable at all, but some are. So our overall school budget that will, would be over 20, just over $20 million. You back out the school contributions, which I talked about earlier, about 2.5 million. You get our overall school budget that we're asking the town for, $17,625,000, 166, which shows the proposed increase and the percentage. All right.
So I know you didn't start at 7%. Can we talk a little bit about how you arrived at 7%? Because I know initially, the first look was up over 10.
Yeah, it's a, again, this is a process as well. It goes on for a while. A lot has to do with just the record-keeping. We looked at some placements that we felt we could keep students in. That, that helped cut us down. We looked at making a decision right now to have kindergarten at four next year. We felt that the census numbers are down. We added 12 students to kindergarten last year. Over the past four years, we've added an average of nine to 10, I think. So we felt that with the census numbers down from last year, we could maintain four for this year. It'll take some movement of staff, which isn't always ideal, but it's going to save the district some money. So we started a lot higher, we worked our way down, you know, without, you know, making any cuts per se, more decisions that we made along the way. And now, we get the fun to go through the budget lines with you, and I'm going to let Mrs. Grant...
Thank you.
...do a lot of this, but please stop us along the way.
So I'm going to go through every line in our budget. Mark has already summarized everything, so this is just getting into the nitty-gritty. Feel free to stop me and ask questions. I'm not going to read the narrative that I provided. We don't need to hear that again. But if you have any questions on a page as we go through, please ask, and if you don't, we'll just move more quickly.
And one thing I'll just make as a commentary, when you see percentages, higher, low, also look at the total dollar amount, because sometimes it's very few dollars, but the percentage might be very high. It's not really reflect, I mean, yes, the percentage is up, but the money is not really...
The first page being the prime example.
Yes, that's why I want to start there.
Right, exactly. So the school committee budget is up slightly, and that's just due to being more accurate in what you're actually spending with meetings, you know, off-site meetings, and I believe some of the, the updated policies came with the cost. Superintendent's office, it's really just contractual pieces with supplies. The business office, contractual amounts, we have seen a jump in legal services this year. We added more revolving funds to offset that. There've just been a number of legal issues. Technology budget, again, we're right on target for last year, and this year looks like about 2%. Again, the budgets for the principals, their secretaries, and a portion of their building budgets has remained at about 3%, which is pretty much a contractual level. The next page, pretty steady at 4%. You know, the sub-lines, we felt like we were able to reduce slightly. We're coming in more on target right now with subs than we had in previously. We'd had some higher years with more required substitutes.
And the goodness is, I think this year, we're having more availability of subs, so...
We do.
That's, I think that's good for our kids and for our staff, too. So, and hopefully.
The next page just has some more narrative on the previous one. This is professional development. We've been able to do it and remain flat. This, this page, the account number, the 3240, that summarizes the, probably the most significant portion of the building budgets. The principals are responsible for about four categories. The 3200, the 3220 accounts, the 3240, the 3245, and the 3230. They aren't all combined in one area in the budget, so it's a little bit difficult to get a handle on. But overall, they typically remain flat year to year. Last year, we increased them due to some curriculum requirements, and this year, our building budgets are up about $8,600. Again, that's related to curriculum additions.
And I give the administrators credit, because they're doing a lot with, you know, relatively small amounts of dollars. We did increase it last year, but it's still, they're trying to pick and choose where they can spend that money.
They definitely hold it in line. The next page represents instructional technology. Again, a portion of that is related to building, the building budgets that the principals did, the instructional technology. Probably our biggest line item in here is the tech maintenance. We don't have significant control over that account. It's handled by HUB, which is an outside consulting firm that is contracted by the town. We pay 55% of those costs, and the other town departments pick up the remainder. We pay a portion of an outside consultant that's hired by the town.
And I think they've done a lot of work with cybersecurity. So a lot of the efforts in, I think, increasing the amount has been to address cybersecurity issues, so a small amount added here will hopefully save us lots of money if we can avoid something.
And in addition, we applied less school contribution by about $25,000 this year compared to last to the tech maintenance line. These are the counselors. And again, we did reduce the choice amount of money, offsetting the high school counselor's Our ESL services are up just contractually. Again, the ESER, the piece that was related to an ESER position came into play here, so we also offset that with some choice money.
And we're plus two students this year over last year at this time, but again, that number could fluctuate a lot.
So this, medical services, the two biggest reductions, we have two nurses retiring this year, and they have been with the district over 20 years, so we'll be hiring. The transportation line, it includes McKinney-Vento, which is transporting by law homeless students. And that's always very unpredictable. If you look back in '23, it cost us almost $110,000. This year, we're a little, we're in a little bit better shape. We're at about $35,000 right now, but that can change very quickly, and there are instances where school districts are paying $600 a day to transport children, so...
I just have a silly question. Have you ever thought about buying our buses?
About what?
Buying buses instead of rent, doing a contract with buses.
So, so we looked, we had the town appropriate 30, up to $30,000 for special education vehicle. We haven't moved forward yet, so the money is still waiting. There's a lot that goes into it. We've also looked in capital over the years of adding an athletic transportation vehicle could save us money. Again, it's, it's a big process. Again, it's, it's a big process to go through it, but that could be a possibility to also use it for athletics, but also pick up a drop-off. But the timing doesn't always work. It is, it could save some money, because you're hiring, you still have to probably hire a driver and pay the insurance and the cost of the vehicle, but it's something that other districts have done and been successful, but it takes a lot of infrastructure and time to do it.
And I know we've talked in the past about, um, not just a special education van, but an athletics van through the capital budget, because that would really save us money over time, to have our own van to transport the smaller teams.
Right.
Right.
So do we know how long the money will sit if we aren't able to find the special education vehicle?
It's been appropriated, so it's, it's, I think it sits until we decide to-
And then 20 years from now, somebody will find it and say, "Ha, look, an error here."
Find my money thing, yeah.
Can I just ask a question back on page 13? I'm sorry. I know we have two tenured staff that are going to be retiring.
Correct.
Is the, do you feel like the appropriation is in line for salary-wise? I mean, I know we're going to be, because I know there's a shortage of nurses out there, and I was just curious, like, how we're going to attract-
Right, we budget for a master step five. In a smaller district like ours, that's a, that's a pretty safe budget number for nurses starting out.
That's, that's part of the reason, you know, the budgets, they're best guesses or best estimates on where we can find people. We may find one a little bit more and one a little bit less, and we try to balance them out.
Okay. Sorry, thank you.
Okay, page 15 is the student bodies activities. This also includes our athletics, as well as the extracurricular for students. We've added about $10,000 in additional student contribution to athletics this year to help offset some of the increased costs.
And one of the things that we'll want to talk about sooner rather than later is athletic fees. It's one, it's a one-time fee of $250 right now, which is, I think, relatively inexpensive compared to a lot of area schools. It's a way to raise more money that would go into athletic revolving, so I think it's something we should discuss. And I don't really like asking people for more money, but it's something, it's, that they're given outside of the regular school day, and I think it would be beneficial to continue to support the great programs that we have. So it's something, a way to add more money, more school contributions to help offset our budget.
And it'll be more in line with what other districts are doing as well.
Yeah, yeah, and we've done some research. Ms. Hale's done a really nice job finding out how many kids, you know, do we want to do one fee for up to three sports, a waterfall, one number for each sport. Again, we want to make it reasonable, we have a family cap and so forth, but something I think we need to discuss.
And it's the same fee for every sport, right? Just, the fee is the fee, there's no difference-
Does they play one sport or three sports? Correct.
And each sport right now is the same fee regardless.
That's, yeah, that's what I was asking.
So I would agree, I know I had mentioned this to you in the past, if we just consider some of the non-athletic clubs at the elementary level, doing enrichment is $89 a session, times four sessions, and I pay for one child $358 for the year, just for, for 20 sessions. So, I, I feel like, you know, when we look at the numbers and we look at how much we spend on athletics per pupil, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot compared to state average, and I think if we want to continue to maintain being able to offer that to our students, we need to look at athletic fees.
I mean, each season's about three months long, every single day, sometimes weekends, and it's, it's good bang for your buck.
The maintenance, staff, director, and supplies are in the next account. And again, it's about a 6% increase this year, and that's given that we decreased the school contribution by 25,000. Again, we've used up a lot of our revolving funds, and with lower school choice numbers, this year, we have to reduce the reduction in general, in the, in the school contribution, and that increases our general fund costs. Heating costs, we look at past history, and typically 5% is a safe increase year to year. That can be very unpredictable. Electric is similar, and water, so, you know, four to 5%, depending on how the trends have Maintenance of grounds is a small account. The biggest piece is the removal of the waste and rubbish dumpsters that we have. Maintenance of buildings, we really look at this entire section in total, because it can get very confusing on where you actually want to book the expenses for some of these individual repairs services, but we're looking at roughly a 5% increase. In 20, in fiscal year '23, we had some significant issues in the buildings, and we spent almost $190,000 with a budget of probably around $90,000, but we've gotten that under control. And we're looking forward to the new school, and hopefully less of these costs. Maintenance of equipment includes the service contracts, and we did see a significant increase this year in our vendors that provide services for multitudes of maintenance items, the fire alarm system, everything related to the building. The athletic equipment went up a bit, because this year, we have to service the treadmills. We've had them for eight or nine years now, and this is really, next year will be the first year that we have to put some significant funding in to maintain them. The insurance is given, number is given to us by the town, and that's their best estimate, 5% over the previous year. We don't have any acquisition of equipment and replacement of equipment. Those tend to fall in our capital budget. So the regular day programs, those are students going to the ag schools. So last year, we budgeted for seven students. We ended up only sending six, and this year, it looks like, given who has applied, we will probably have six students attending the ag schools.
And this is just tuition?
Yes.
Special Ed administration.
I'm sorry, Kathy. Can we just go back for a quick second and talk about transportation for the agricultural schools? I know that, that has been an area of concern in the past. I just kind of want to talk about how much that would cost if it were something that we were to add into the budget.
We have it in the budget, it's under regular-
No, I mean, like, so, more direct, rather than cost-sharing.
Oh, gosh. It would probably be, what would you say, around $75,000 to get a bus a year?
Third, oh, 350 a day. It's ranged, it depends on their availability, 350 to 450 a day. So I think it's, the last number we looked at was about $81,000, about the cost of a regular, one of our school buses doing their route every single day.
And right now, we participate in a collaborative with nine other schools.
Which is smart, if we have only six students using the-
Correct.
Right. That's a maximum that could, although some may not choose.
Thank you.
Okay, so the teaching services for special education, and I think we've touched on that quite a bit with the positions that have been added, et cetera. You see some significant reductions, maybe in RLM aides and high school aides. These are fluid. People move around between the buildings, get reassigned. Each, what is, you know, the number of students that require aides, one year in the Howard, those students move up to the high school. So, we are budgeted for the same number of instructional assistants as we had the previous year, that's 31 and a half.
And that was increased from a few years ago, but we're comfortable sitting at that number for right now. Again, that was an add that we needed, and we did it, and it's been working.
Here, this, this group reflects the increase in the sub-separate staff, and it also reflects a decrease of about $65,000 in the school contribution. The teaching services in special needs and education, again, that's up significantly, but this is where we have added the Coda. We have a BCBA, it's step and track increases, and it's also a decrease in ESER. The speech pathologist line, the $57,000 increase, that's pulling in the loss of ESER Here's just more detail on what you discussed earlier regarding the psychol, the psychologists. Now, the write-up might be slightly differed than what Kathy discussed, because this is fluid. We're working with the same amount of money, but it depends on who applies and whether we have, you know, fill the two open psych positions, or is it one now? It's one.
We have one, one school psych and one adjustment council. But if two, they're filling two school psych positions.
Two, right.
But they were doing part of both.
Exactly.
So trying to get streamlined to one.
So in total, we have one, two, three, four, five point six positions in this area. That just helps give a little update on it. Again, there's about $65,000 reduction in the school contribution in this area, so that also contributes to the percentage change, and that is due to the expired grants. Our special ed transportation, this is always difficult to predict, as we've discussed. We're up 11% this year. You know, I think we're on target from what we budgeted in the previous year. To date, we've spent over $300,000 on special ed transportation. The equip, any equipment, again, is through capital. So, the out-of-district tuition changes. I'm going to call your attention to collaborative tuition. It looks, you know, it's a reduction of $132,000 over the previous year. That's made up of a couple of factors. One, we increased by 100,000 the amount of circuit breaker we applied to that collaborative line, and it also, but there's still a reduction of 32,000, and that represents the success in the sub-separate program, where students that in the previous year, we had anticipated may go out, actually were able to be retained this year. So there's real data on how well sub-separate, the addition of the sub-separate classes has worked. And our non-public special education line item, they, I've actually added another $70,000 of circuit breaker in 240 to the school contribution. So, the increase, if you take into account the increased school contribution this year, plus the actual increase in the budgeted lines, are this program, this special ed programs in this category, the out-of-district, actually increased by $354,000 if we didn't have the offset. So, that's an area that is growing, which Mark reflected in his presentation, to about 2.8 million. I know that was kind of fast, there's a lot of detail. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out with me. Out to me.
Well, I just want to thank both of you, because I know the late nights and long hours you've put into getting this budget to where it is. I love that we're shifting to a more proactive approach to the budget. I think that's beneficial. And the fact that our school choice applicants just keep going shows that families want their kids to come here and join our district because of what we offer. So I, I think it's, it's a solid budget, considering our needs and, you know, considering what we need to do to be sustainable for the town. So, again, my thanks to both of you for all your hard work.
I echo that. Thank you so much. I know it, it's not easy.
Way too manual a process.
Yeah.
There's no budget module with our accounting system, unfortunately.
All right.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right. Well, it is now 7:04, so upon conclusion of the fiscal year '25 budget presentation, I'd like to formally close the budget hearing and reopen the March 4th, 2024 meeting of the Westbridge Art School Committee, and begin by introducing Ms. Brooke, no, not Brooke, Mackenzie Craig to the committee. Mackenzie, thank you for being here and taking your time out of your busy night to be with us tonight. Thank you.
And learn a lot about budget.
Yeah. More than you ever wanted to know. All right, next up is the approval of minutes. The meet, the meeting minutes from our last meeting on February 5th aren't quite complete yet, so we're going to delay approving these until our next meeting. And moving on to the superintendent's update, back to you, Mr. Budwell.
Okay, you have the North River Collaborative Quarterly Report in your package, just for your review and information. As you know, I attend monthly board meetings with the North River Collaborative. I think they're doing a great job, changing leadership, but information should be helpful and informative. School choice, so as I mentioned earlier, we had the most applications ever, 222. We've averaged about 150 in the past. Again, I don't want to repeat too much, but just quickly to go through it, the elementary grades will most likely be closed due to our already higher enrollments and looking towards the future, and we'll be looking mostly to add in 9 through 12, specifically grade 9. Those are our target areas, though. We'll start making those decisions after the budget, when we get our final numbers in. Feasibility study, so I want to update you where we stand with the MSBA building project. So we're following a timeline created by the MSBA and working in collaboration with them. We did a request for services, an RFS, which was posted for the appropriate two weeks. We had on February 14th, the elementary schools loved it. We came in with about 20 people and did site visits and informational meetings, starting at Rozelle, going to Spring Street and to the Howard School. It was a good opportunity for us to get to meet some of the potential people who might be bidding for the OPM services, so that was a good day for us. All of the information had to be in from each of the firms by February 21st. We ended up with 10 firms presenting or providing information for consideration. There's been a OPM selection subcommittee formed of eight members. We met and we selected four firms to be on the shortlist for interviews. We have the interview scheduled for this Wednesday, right here in this room, 2:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the afternoon. Our next full school building committee meeting will be March 12th, and on the 13th of March, we have a packet due to the MSBA. So we have some work to do prior to the 12th to get it ready for the building committee. It's similar to the IFS, but not, thankfully, not as long. And then it'll go to the MSBA, and we're tentatively on their invite for their OPM review panels. The OPM is the owner's project manager. That's the person who's going to really be in charge, their firm, of guiding us through the feasibility process. Once we finish the process and we've negotiated the price, which is already out there, and they're approved, then we'll start the process for the designer or the architect for the feasibility study. And then it really begins after we have them on board. So the process does take about a year and a half to two years total, but that's from the December timeline. And we'll get a huge amount of information from the feasibility study that we will continue to share with the town. We have our website up there. It's got some information. As we go through this process, there'll be more information. It's our goal to be as transparent and open as possible, so everyone knows where we are. We've got a great school building committee. I thank all of them for their service, and we continue to move forward. And we just wanted to offer a congratulations to our school resource officer, Officer Tim Pope. He has been promoted to the rank of sergeant. He's unfortunately not able to be with us tonight. I don't forget another picture, no. But Tim has done an outstanding job, very fortunate to have him over the past four years. It's, it's great for him- It's, it's great for him and his, you know, family for the promotion. But he's done, you know, been at the schools every morning. He's been at dismissal. Anytime there's a need, he's called. He comes over. He's got a great attitude. He's done great things in the classrooms. He's put staff and students at ease and family members. I know his family and parents have reached out to Officer Pope. So it's a big loss for us in moving on, but he's done a wonderful job. We're happy to have Officer Chris Packard come in, another West Bridgewater graduate. So he comes with an extensive background. I've put stuff out on social media on both of them. But just in general, I think we're very fortunate to have such a great working relationship with, I think with all town departments, but with the police and fire. Anytime we need anything from the safety people, they're, they're in a heartbeat. They're active members of our Safe Schools Committee and just two great departments. So congratulations to Pope. We do have a nice little plaque for him. I'll make sure he gets it.
I'd like to extend my thanks and my appreciation, Officer Pope, and congratulations on his promotion. I remember when this position was added to the town budget, and I was opposed to it because I didn't understand the position. But he has really embodied community policing and making a connection with our students. The kids love him. I know my own kids love him. So it's been, he's, he's truly part of the Wildcat family. So I appreciate him. I know we all appreciate him. And wish him well.
Yes.
I'm sure he'll turn up.
Yes.
Officer Pope's been a friend of mine for a long time, and he said that he highly recommends Officer Packard for the position as well. So I feel comfortable welcoming him to the position of school resource officer.
Excellent. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bodwell. And now Mackenzie, student rep update.
At the middle senior high school, the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School Band is proud of our two talented players who participated in the Bridgewater State University High School Honors Band today. Jasmine Lawler and George Peroud represented West Bridgewater with spirit and learned a lot playing with players from around, around Massachusetts and Rhode Island area. The West Bridgewater Model United Nations Club attended Medfield High School's Model United Nations Meet on February 3rd, 2024. Students had the opportunity to listen to two state representative speeches. Students also researched, wrote position papers, and engaged in their role play respective to their committee, under forms of the D-Day invasion. Computer Science and Robotics students got to see some real world robots in action last month when they were invited to visit the iRobot headquarters in Bedford, Mass. Students met a programmer and design engineer who gave us a tour of iRobot's Cool Stuff Museum. Did you know that before iRobot made the Roomba, they got a start building a Mars Rover robot? They actually funded the project by selling movie rights. iRobot then went to, on to create toys, including My Real Baby, a robotic baby doll that could show emotions and speak based on interactions with humans. Students and staff were impressed with iRobot's mind sweeping robots that helped clear minefields in Cambodia. After touring the museums, students were able to practice coding on some real robots in the iRobot maker space. What a great opportunity to see some coding in action. Students from the middle senior high school have been doing community field trips. This month, they explored leisure activities, and students had a great time bowling at Ryan Family Amusements at the Howard School. Students were eager and happy to be back in school returning from February vacation. The Little Leos Club just wrapped up our penny war, and the winner was Ms. Torres's class. Congrats to all participants. The money raised goes to the Lions Club iResearch Club. Students in the Little Leos Club also voted on a kindness rock project and to do a West Bridgewater cleanup dive in the month of May. Student Council has been participating in food focus groups with the head of West Bridgewater Food Services, Anne Marie Grinder. Student Council members have sampled new menu items, provided feedback, and engaged in dialogue regarding what elementary students would enjoy served in cafeteria. These focus groups have led to new, new food group items be served in the cafeteria. Student Council is looking forward to putting together a healthy eating initiative to take place sometime in the next few months. On February 29th, author of Fenway and Hattie, Victoria J. Coe, presented in the fifth grade classrooms on narrative writing. At the end of the workshop, she held a question and answer session with the students and personally signed their books. The Rozelle McDonald School. Thank you to the PTO for kicking off our Read Across America Week with Tommy's Magic of Books Program, which promotes reading and books that inspires children to turn off their devices and turn on the thrill of reading. Last Friday, our children witnessed how reading inspires imagination as some of the very popular stories books came to life. The Velvet Rabbit and the Secret Garden in Charlotte Swab are a few books utilized in this exciting educational performance of fun and laughter. The month of February was dedicated to positivity, and we had some amazing kiddos share their thoughts on how they, they promote positivity throughout the day during the morning announcements. Our student council members are hard at work getting many projects up and running. They're hosting their very first schoolwide Math Madness Challenge. On Fridays each week in March, students will take a fact challenge that is appropriate for their grade level. Student council members will collect correct and tallies scores to keep track of the students' progress. We cannot wait to see what our students will achieve. The council members have compiled information and wish lists to partner with our food service department in the building of school gardens. Finally, our student leaders are organizing fundraisers and collections for both the food pantry and causes to support local kids in need. Information on these endeavors will be out later in, later this month or in April. The Spring Street School. There are, there was a lot to celebrate in the month of February at the Spring Street School. Our kindergarten students have been working extremely hard to complete their weekly goal for completing puzzles and were surprised by Gigi, ST Math mascot, visit this month. ST Math is an online unique app that provides students with learning through challenging puzzles and a non-routine problem solving. With ST Math, students build deep conceptual understanding while having fun. Thank you to the parent volunteers that helped in classrooms or sent in supplies so our kiddos could celebrate Valentine's Day and the 100th Day of School. Students enjoying crafts, math activities, and interactive games. Our preschool program continues to use the year-long seeds of STEM, standard-aligned, hands-on, integrated STEM curriculum. Problem Panda needed help with a broken leg, and the students found ways to help Panda move across the classroom. The month of February was also dedicated to learning about the dentist and the post office.
I will say, one, the Howard School students came over to the high school today for a presentation sponsored by the PTO. So thank you to the PTO, but it was called Mr. Peace, and it talked about diversity and being kind and caring and supporting one another, and I thought he did a great job. It seemed to be very well received and by students and staff, so.
That's great.
It was a nice, it was a nice pick-me-up.
Yeah. Nice. All right, moving right along. Under business, we have a voting issue for the 2024-2025 school calendar. We, the copy was in our folder. I have to admit, I didn't get access to it till right before this meeting, so I don't know, I haven't had the chance to really dive into it. I know we spoke about it, Mr. Bodwell, and, and I don't know, is there anything you want to point out to us?
I think the main thing is where the holidays fall, around Christmas and New Year's. We've proposed a two-week break rather than coming back on a Thursday and Friday. I think that's, when that fell the same date years ago, that's what was done, so we tried to stay all consistent with that. It's, districts do it different ways. Some will come back. My concern maybe if we come back those days, if we're a snow day or student attendance or staff attendance, it, so sometimes a break is good, depending on health and, you know, wellness and so forth. But I could go either way. It doesn't matter to me. I would defer to the school committee.
I know we had also discussed this, and you had asked me what my district is doing, and I don't know yet because they have not voted on the calendar. So I'm curious, do you have an awareness of what surrounding districts are doing? I, I just, I'm all for a two-week break, but I'm just thinking about consistency in terms of parents in the district who are teachers and then teachers in the district who also are parents and whether, if just falling in line with surrounding districts is what I'm interested in knowing.
I will, I don't know right now, so I will ask.
I, I know what you're saying, but if, like, if people don't, aren't teachers, I mean, people have to work.
Yeah. You're right.
I think the end date is still fairly early with that time off, so.
Yep. All right, so we can look at it further, and we'll just vote on it at our next meeting. Anyone has any objections to that? All right. Inclusion Matters update, Mr. Schmier.
The mission of Inclusion Matters as West Bridgewater's Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy within the school system, and opportunities for education and community building through regular workshops and events for parents, guardians, and families. Please mark your calendars for our March event, Navigating the High School to College Transition. The young adult's adjustment to college is a challenge, especially when they have disability-related needs. Join Inclusion Matters as we host Amy Breton, a college learning specialist with Focus Collegiate. Amy has over 10 years of experience working in accessibility, mostly recently with Holy Cross, where she was an associate director of the Office of Accessibility Services. Amy has vast knowledge and experience assisting individuals and understanding the process and building the self-advocacy skills needed to transition their IEPs into accommodations. Come join us as we learn how students can have their educational needs met at the post-secondary level. This event will be held on Tuesday, March 26th, via Zoom. In the words of Arthur Chan, "Diversity is a fact. Equity is a choice. Inclusion is an action, and belonging is an outcome." For more information about Inclusion Matters and upcoming events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that. Definitely is a Zoom with the transition, transitioning, because I thought the flyer was in person. It didn't have Zoom information on it.
It's, it's actually going to be both.
Oh, okay.
We've reserved the learning commons, so it can be in person, but there will be a Zoom component as well.
If you can attend in person. Okay, good.
Yep.
We try to have Zoom meetings when, when it's possible.
Sure, yeah.
So more people can join us.
Yep.
If they can't be here.
But the presenter will be here or, no, she'll be?
I don't know where she will be.
All right, well, that's all right. Either way, we can attend in person or via Zoom. All right. Next up is policies.
Okay, move to open the following policies for review. GCA professional staff positions. GCBA professional staff salary schedules. GCBB employment of principals. GCBC professional staff supplementary pay plans. GCE professional staff recruiting slash posting of vacancies. GCS professional staff hiring. GCG substitute professional staff employment. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yep. We are diving back into the G's. Strategy. We, we had looked at quite a few of them. It's very heavy. Gave it a rest, and now we're, we're moving back over to the G's and trying to work through those.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Hold on one second. Let me pull this up. Move to adopt the following policies. EBAB pest management policy. EC buildings and grounds management. ECA buildings and grounds security. ECAC vandalism. ECAF security cameras in schools. EDC authorized use of school-owned materials. EFE civil rights complaint policy for child nutrition programs. KDCB district website and social media. And EFAB life-threatening allergic reactions. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yep. So to make it easy this month, you'll see that everything was in the folder, and we had quite a few that were new to our index, so there weren't any significant changes. So EC, ECA, ECAC, EDC, EFE, all new. Also new is the one that we held over from last month, which was KDCB, which was the district website and social media policy. We've worked with Mark. We've had many discussions. And what we're recommending is to not turn off the social media commentary, however, has disclaimer language added that explicitly tells viewers that the district neither can regularly monitors nor condones the opinions of commentary that are on these posts. It also is, will direct those in need of assistance that they need to reach out through the appropriate communication channels. So those are the ones that are new to our index. We reviewed others, three others, and EBAB, there were no changes. ECAF, very small tweak. There was a revision for, that you see in the policy that just adds the line, law enforcement access is allowed to have footage. And then policy EFAB, life-threatening allergic reactions. We had opened this. We're going to adopt it today, but we're going to relook at it again probably later in the fall, maybe early 2025. This is a policy that is no longer on the MASC policy index. It hasn't been there for a few years, about seven or so. But despite that discontinuance, we're going to recommend leaving this policy as is until some of the content that's in it can be added to the MERP. And anything that can't be added there, we're going to work with Mr. Bodwell to ensure that maybe it needs to be its own standalone procedures document. And that is it for policies.
Any questions or further discussion?
So the life-threatening allergic reactions policy was really more of a procedure?
Yes.
Yes.
It's very heavy, it's a very heavy procedural document.
Yep.
It's my understanding that this is the document that is sent out to staff during training, and so staff are required to sign off that they've read it. So it's really important. I know we've, we've had a lot of discussions in the past about taking those procedures out of policies and putting them procedural documents. And this is one, just given the sensitivity of, or the nature of the topic and the content, we want to hold it in place until we're absolutely certain that there's training protocols in place and the information is represented elsewhere.
Right. Yeah. I mean, in the policy, it says responsibility of the parent or guardian, and there's like a whole nother section that's responsibility of the classroom teacher. And so it's, it's very detailed.
And I have it, I've reached out to our lead nurse, because obviously it's our most vulnerable student, and we want to make sure they're as protected as possible. So we want to make sure it's very clear.
So we're recommending to leave it.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye. All right. Thank you very much. Warrant Subcommittee Report.
The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2024. Bill warrants, February 1st, 2024, for $62,002.08. February 8th, 2024, for $143,446.31. February 15th, 2024, for $276,961.34. And February 22nd, 2024, for $63,279.18. There was no warrant on February 29th, 2024. The following two payroll warrants, February 2nd, 2024, for $571,430.50. And February 16th, 2024, for $575,154.04. As always, all warrants are public record, and ones signed are available in the Selectmen's Office for review.
So we get a free warrant on leap day?
Yeah, I got the day off.
All right. Thank you. Public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members shall limit comments to three minutes, and I'm reminded that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. Personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Do we have anyone? Nope. All right. Moving right along to the calendar events. District-wide, there'll be a half-day on March 6th and no school on March 29th for the observance of Good Friday. District meetings, superintendent morning meeting. The next one will be March 15th at 9 o'clock. There'll be a PTO meeting on March 6th at 7:00 PM in the RLM CAF. And the athletic boosters, I think it says March 13th, but there is a request to move that to March 20th, so that date is tentative. Spring Street School, there'll be no school tomorrow, March 5th, for pre-K and kindergarten due to the presidential primary election. On March 13th, there's, there'll be a School Improvement Council meeting at 3:00. At RLM on March 18th, there'll be a School Improvement Council meeting at 3:15. At RLM on March 18th, there'll be a School Improvement Council meeting at 3:15. And on March 22nd, another PTO-sponsored event, Whale and Dolphin Conservation of Plymouth for Grade 2. And on April 2nd, there'll be a Power Squad Assembly for the third grade. At Howard on March 5th for Grades 4 and 5, report cards will be distributed electronically. On March 26th, there'll be a School Council meeting at 2:45. March 27th and 28th will be the MCAS ELA for Grade 6. And April 2nd and 4th will be MCAS ELA for Grade 5. And on April 5th, Grade 6 report cards will be electronically distributed. At the Middle Senior High School, Spirit Week is currently ongoing this week through Friday. On March 8th, there'll be the Mr. WB 2024 competition in the auditorium, starting at 7:00 PM. March 11th will be Honor Bowl. March 13th is the Winter Track Banquet. March 15th is the Best Buddies Volleyball Tournament at 12:00 PM in the gym. March 19th will be the Principal's Coffee Hour, starting at 8:00 AM. And April 8th through the 12th, prom ticket sales will be held during Power Block. Our next school committee meeting dates, as previously mentioned, we'll have the budget vote meeting next Monday, March 11th, at 6:00 PM here in the Learning Commons. And then our next regular school committee meeting will be on Monday, April 5th, again at 6:00 here in the Learning Commons. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Great. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks, Mackenzie.